...of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Today is September 8th. Can I have a roll call?
Clear.
Here.
Aaron?
Here.
Meyer?
Here.
Here.
Anybody from the audience that wish to address the board? If not, or the commissions, the beautification committee?
Our estimating was canceled, so I have nothing to report, except we'll be having a meeting tomorrow at the village hall.
Fourth of July commission, trustee Coleman?
Yes, under the commission, I'd like to consider a motion authorizing the purchase and payment of materials for the beer stand building in an amount not to exceed thirty thousand. This motion is being requested by the treasurer so that five percent quick payment discount can be made, saving the commission fifteen hundred dollars on construction of the building.
Second. And I'll have a question, there was a motion made in there, the second. Is this actually worded right? Consider a motion authorizing the purchase and payment of materials for the beer stand in the amount not to exceed thirty thousand dollars. It sounds like to me you're authorizing a payment of thirty thousand dollars and that's it.
It's prior approval.
I know what you're looking for, and I don't think this is clear on what you're asking. You're asking to be able to, without approval?
Without prior approval.
Without prior approval, to be expend up to thirty thousand dollars at a time?
Well, it'll be a twelve thousand dollar second probably. What it is, we've got a credit card for them, and twelve thousand dollars left. And the way the requirement is, anything over five thousand requires prior approval of this board, except for June and July. So I'm asking for you to waive that, so that we can pay for the invoice, and then purchase another twelve thousand dollars. If not, we're only going to go do that once about every forty-five days. So we'll make three, almost three purchases, maxing out the credit card, and I'll pay down, and then we'll make another purchase. So we can benefit from the five thousand, or five percent, if I put on, if we put on the credit card. So that's what I'm trying to do. So giving us up to thirty thousand dollars without prior approval, you'll be approving it, but it'll be after the fact.
Okay, so what I'm asking is, once we reach that thirty thousand dollar limit, do you have to come back again and ask for another thirty thousand?
Yes, I assume that this thirty thousand is going to handle the materials for the Lowe's. But I'm only dealing with the Lowe's credit card.
Yeah, that's right.
So this will handle the purchase for Lowe's.
Does everybody understand that? Okay, any other questions?
Has this been approved by the Fourth of July commission building?
Yes.
We're really just accepting what they've already gone through, I mean, really, it's the money that was raised by Fourth of July.
And primarily, this started because they recommended to get the credit card and get a five percent discount, that's why we took advantage of the credit card. No other questions? Roll call.
Clear.
Yes.
Aaron?
Yes.
Meyer?
Yes.
Yes.
You commission, trustee Cooper?
We have our four-night camp out in the park this Saturday, and that's really it. Registration's due at the village hall by this Friday.
Rebuttal commission, trustee Lynn?
There's no report at this time.
And trustee Cleary?
Kim? Treasury report?
Okay, flipping to the first page of the bank balances, there's not a lot to report. Our balances are nearly identical from the previous month. There's not a lot of change, small in and outs, just based really on our wire billing cycle and the payroll. So it was an eventful month cash-wise, the change of fourteen thousand there. On the commission accounts, the biggest items were, it looks like a lot of the checks were Fourth of July cleared, bringing that balance down, the ones that were written July, cleared in August. Otherwise, there's not much change either way for the rest of the Lowe's. So that's really it for our bank balances as such. Next page got our graph, and it shows what we just saw, which was basically unchanged position for the previous month. Not too unlike the trends in the past. The only wild card we continue to see is the Dixie Highway account, because it's a short run project that's spending its money, and will continue to do so till it's exhausted. Here, the project's completed, so, which brings us to the six twenty-five Dixie account, which is the next page. On the front sheet, you see that the actual bank balance at the end of the month was one eighty-five, and I'm showing one fifty-seven here, because I included the two items at the bottom that hadn't cleared yet, but were significant items that had been paid out. So it's kind of a little hybrid then, of what we additioned but not cleared. So we're standing at one hundred fifty-seven, at the point this was drawn out. No further analysis in the packet of budget and some of the expenses. As of our register, this is where we stood. Then last page, I got your commission bills or non-village payable payments. Nothing really in here exceptional, mostly payroll related, once again. And we do have the Dixie Highway expenditures that had gone through the twenty-nine-two-sixty. And other than that, it's really the bills you would expect throughout the month. Like I said, kind of an uneventful month, but that's good sometimes. Any questions?
If there are none, I make a motion approving the treasurer's report and the financial activity for the month of July.
Second.
Motion for, or was a second? Any questions? Roll call.
You?
Yes.
Coleman?
Yes.
Meyer?
Yes.
Aaron?
Yes.
We also have the bills in front of us for the prior month that we need review. These are also provided under subject cover. There's a few areas that we've had some late billing come in after the bills were initiated out the door, so just to make sure that you're aware. You're going to see a few of them where there's something that looks like it's been doubled up. That's because the first bill I had already reviewed, the second bill came in after they were submitted to me, so that's why they're involved. There's one on the sixth page, Johnny on the spot, and then there's also one on the eighth page, which is prior material. And then another one, which is, we've added on, is the one for petty cash. If you want to build, trustee Cleary's is Sintosville, and what are you going to be taking care of that, canceling that service? Because we got another month's bill.
I will personally take care of it on Thursday. I asked the guys to tell me when he was in there to come and visit me, and that hasn't happened, so I will either call his pauses, or hopefully I'll run him down.
Okay, any comments on the bills? I make a motion approving the bills and the payment of one hundred and thirty-seven thousand, one hundred and twenty-nine dollars and thirty-six cents.
Second.
There's a motion for, or was a second? Any questions? Roll call.
You?
Yes.
Yes.
Meyer?
Yes.
Meyer?
Yes.
Waylon?
Yes.
Okay, there's cleaning up we need to do concerning some appropriations that we have done, to make sure that we move money into the right locations. Most of these are any kind of MFT funds. There are a few resolutions that we've kind of gone through before, but we want to make sure we've got the money in the right location. One has to do with the I dot traffic signal upgrades. Another has to do with safe routes to school. Was any application that we had done? And then the last is the engineering services for Baxter and Woodman to support the safe route to school, so. Any additional resolutions, Bobby, that you want?
Yeah, the first one would be a resolution, this right now, authorizing fourteen hundred and thirty-seven dollars and fifty cents in MFT funds as a local match for I dot traffic signal upgrades. We've paid this a year ago out of MFT already, but we have to appropriate the money. It's a legitimate expense out of MFT, it's just that they want to see that we authorize that by a resolution, not just by approving the bill. We've already paid it, so I would pass a resolution.
Okay, so.
That's the first one. We have to each have a separate motion.
Okay, anything special on the last two?
No, the first two are resolutions, the third one is just a motion.
Okay.
We have to assign resolution numbers to these two resolutions.
So I make a resolution authorizing, resolution number?
Twenty-fourteen dash ten.
Authorizing one thousand four hundred and thirty-seven dollars and fifty cents of MFT funds as a local match to the I dot for traffic signal upgrades.
Second. There's a motion on the floor, or was a second? Any questions to the motion? Roll call.
Waylon?
Yes.
Coleman?
Yes.
Meyer?
Yes.
Aaron?
Yes.
Clear.
Yes. I make a motion for resolution twenty-fourteen ten dash eleven, authorizing the payment of one thousand five hundred dollars in MFT funds for safe route to schools application.
Second. There's a motion on the floor, or was a second? Any questions? Roll call.
Cleary?
Yes.
Aaron?
Yes.
Meyer?
Yes.
Coleman?
Yes.
Waylon?
Yes.
And the last is, I make a motion approving the MFT engineering services agreement in the amount of fifteen hundred dollars to Baxter and Woodman for the safe routes to schools.
Second. There's a motion on the floor, or was a second? Any questions to that motion? Roll call.
Waylon?
Yes.
Coleman?
Yes.
Meyer?
Yes.
Clear.
Yes.
Scott?
Okay, we have to consider paying some bills on the six twenty-five Dixie Highway account. There were two bills added, one for purry disposal for three hundred, and the second for the Chase credit card services. That's the new safe that's going to go into the building, and that's seven hundred and nine dollars and forty-three cents. And I believe if I have the total right, the total bills come up to be eleven thousand seven sixty point nineteen. I'd like to make a motion to pay the bills in the amount totaling eleven thousand seven hundred and sixty dollars and nineteen cents.
Second. Motion on the floor, or was a second? Any questions in motion? Roll call.
Cleary?
Yes.
Aaron?
No.
Meyer?
Yes.
Meyer?
No.
Waylon?
Yes. Then we have to consider waiving the bidding requirements for the purchase of furnishings due to the uniqueness of the bids, and awarding the proposal in the amount of forty thousand five hundred and seventy-three dollars to McGrath Waylon of Joliet for all furnishings at six twenty-five Dixie Highway.
Second.
So motion on the floor, or was a second? Just a comment, Bobby, you first.
Yes, we need two motions, one to waive bids, the second one to authorize the purchase. Again, we want two separate ones, that was corrected today. Any terms?
First motion is to waive the bidding requirements for the purchase of furnishings due to the uniqueness of the bids.
Second. Any motion on the floor, or was a second? Just a comment, we did seek out more than one price, there were two prices that were obtained, so we did shop for the merchandise. It's not just like we waived bids and we went to one company. All of us didn't shop for this.
Right, there were two proposals in your board packet, McGrath and McChains.
Any other comments or questions? Roll call.
Waylon?
Yes.
Coleman?
No.
Meyer?
Yes.
Aaron?
No.
Clear.
Yes.
Okay, and then the next is to award the proposal in the amount of forty thousand dollars, forty thousand five hundred and seventy-three dollars to McGrath Waylon of Joliet for all furnishings at six twenty-five Dixie Highway.
Second.
Motion on the floor, or was a second? Any questions in motion? Roll call.
Cleary?
Yes.
Aaron?
No.
Meyer?
Yes.
Meyer?
No.
Waylon?
Yes. Okay, we have two phone systems, one for the six twenty-five Dixie, and the second for the police station at seven twenty-four Penfield Street. Both of these systems would be the same, and are capable of being linked together wirelessly. This will solve the phone problems for at least ten years. Two proposals were received, one from Comcast, the other from Call One. The Comcast proposal is a three-year lease on the system, and a total of three-year cost of fifty-four thousand four hundred and thirty dollars. The village would not own the system, but would be provided faster internet service, correct?
That's correct.
The Call One proposal will cost nineteen thousand three hundred and thirty-seven dollars and thirty-five cents upfront, and a monthly fee of seven hundred and ninety dollars fifty-four cents for the phone service, for a total of three years, at a cost of forty-seven thousand seven hundred and ninety-six dollars and seventy-nine cents. And the village would own its own phone system and just pay for a monthly phone service. So what we're going to do is, we're going to, I want to make a motion to approve the amount of nineteen thousand three hundred and thirty-seven dollars thirty-five cents to purchase two new phone systems, one for six twenty-five Dixie, and the second for the police station at seven twenty-four Penfield Street, and that is to Call One, correct?
Yes.
Second.
Motion or for, second?
If you accept the Call One proposal, who's actually providing your internet service?
Airblock. That's the Airblock, that's the internet that we've been provided, and we renegotiated, we got that in contract.
Yeah, technically it's surfer wireless now.
But it was Airblock.
But we had a conference call just on Friday to make sure it was going to work, and we have a comfort level, because if the wireless internet does go down, the system will transfer automatically to an analog system.
Okay, because where I just worked, we went internet-based phones, and it's only as good as, for internet, it can be, yeah, we had to reboot, and we did not have Comcast, we had AT&amp;T, and it's still, we had a lot of problems rebooting constantly, phones didn't work, so just, you have to make sure your service is.
One thing about this, if this is a problem, we can dump it and do the Comcast lease. We just thought this was a better use of taxpayers' money right now, try the system.
Would the Comcast lease work with this equipment?
No, we would have to sell the system, and lease it Comcast. But we had concerns about Comcast as well.
You say issues? You sure on that? Bottom line is, all you have to do is have to do a different internet connection at both places.
Are you putting in a buy-on system?
That's true, you could do Comcast for this system, if you mind, that is correct.
You're putting a buy-on system in.
Boy, you lucky.
Yeah. So yeah, it'll work with any.
Everything is going to work now, I mean, it's.
The good thing about it is, is the entire, everybody got together on the same page and the same phone, and they actually tested the signaling, and since you've been there, they upgraded it, and it's much faster than what it used to be. So they are, everybody's comfortable with what they saw and what they did, that's the main thing, that they didn't just say, you know, go in, they actually tested it, yeah.
And if the internet does go down, we were told that we would still have an analog backup.
I got to ask a question to Brian, did you second that?
Yes.
I have a question for the audience and for the rest of the board. This is all linked together with the police station, correct?
When you're on internet, yeah.
It's two separate phone systems linked to a mothership which is located at the village hall. In other words, they can operate independently of each other, but for the two buildings to communicate with each other, the police have to rely on our building to do. Is that correct, Chris?
Yes, yes. If we didn't have that, basically you'd have to pick up the phone and call the police station, as opposed to having the same systems, you're solving two problems, replacing an antiquated phone system the police department now has, which would have to be replaced eventually, and then now you're linking the two buildings. It is also possible, we're not going through the web system to link any other buildings that you have in the future, we talked about linking the sewer plant, we talked about all the floor ceilings, but we found that it just wouldn't solve anything by doing it. But the police department and the village hall, to continue the way they're functioning today, this would have to be done.
And our existing phone system within the village hall police station is now over ten years old, Jeanette, and you can get parts for it?
We can only get reconditioned parts from.
A second?
A second dealer, and we have a person that helps us out with the phone system when we have issues, and he's just real busy at this point, and I'm having trouble getting a hold on to be able to get fixes done, and we're having a lot of little glitches, and I'm, we actually, our phone system was hacked a couple months ago, because it's so easy to get in from the outside, put in a password, and they tried to make a call to another country from our phone system, and it was caught by the carrier, and they called us and we blocked all out-of-the-country phone calls, but our system's kind of easy to hack because it's so old, and it's starting, and that, I think, caused some problems with the system too, so it's kind of linking now, and I'm real worried it's not going to last. Thank you.
Any other questions? Roll call.
Waylon?
Yes.
Coleman?
Yes.
Meyer?
Yes.
Aaron?
Yes.
Cleary?
Yes.
Okay, the last item I have is in regards to the Fourth of July commission, and this is for the building that is going up, replacing the old beer stand. And what was going to be a volunteer effort turned out to be way too big of a job for the Fourth of July commission, since seventy-four yards of concrete needs to be finished. Of course, the remainder of the building will be done through volunteers and so forth. So what we're doing tonight is, I'm making a motion authorizing the waiving of bids due to the constraints and award proposal for the pouring of the footing and slab for the new beer stand in Fireman's Park. That's due to the time constraints. We're under a time issue here, so that's why we're asking to waive the bids.
And chairman of the commissions here, you'd like to answer any questions? You may have, again, this will require two motions. Scott, did you make that a motion? Was there a motion to waive bids?
Yes.
And there is a second? Any questions in motion?
The two bids you have, are you going to one guy, and they're the same?
There's three bids.
Three different people?
Three.
There were actually three bids.
Who were in the package?
The brand-new one is right here, Brian. This actually is the lowest one, right, Jim?
Correct.
There was to be a fourth one, if I remember right, and that one ever came in, and that one never materialized.
How did you get the bids, and how did they know what you needed, Jim?
There's a architectural set of prints from Mike Stenner.
So you have gone for bids?
Technically, we haven't put it in the newspaper.
Is the lowest bid consistent with all the other stuff that's in here?
Yes, sir. Yeah, Brian, the one bid we got from Galeni Concrete, which was the highest of the three, actually required us to do a little more. We had to drill the holes and everything, I believe. It was the Chuck's bid and the.
Carter.
Carter bid that actually said, we'll take care of the excavation. There was no excavation in the higher of the three.
What was the reason for the four-inch schedule eighty pipe?
Drainage.
Underneath the slab, though, what's the drainage for?
From underneath the eyebrow, going out, drainage for the beer. There's one, there's an existing one right there, Florida, right?
The beer trailer likes to leak a lot of beer, and you don't want that pounding in your beer stand, so.
It's that two percent overage and spook.
So are you guys planning on having the beer truck in, the beer thing inside the enclosure? Because right now, you have it outside.
Rather than the tent that they put there, you're putting an apartment structure there, so you're going to have to put the tent in. It's basically a forty-by-eighty rectangle with an eyebrow coming out on it, and the eyebrow is for the beer trailer. Bob has a complete set of drawings.
So you have a location where you have, you have a location where you want this?
There's a complete set of drawings over there.
Right here.
And ironically, not about all three bids, they're for.
Any other questions or comments?
In order to meet the footing requirements that the village has in its code, these footings are big, I mean, they're like fifty-five gallon drums buried in ground from the concrete to the hose. That's the most expensive part of the job.
Part of the problem is, is we're running out of time.
Oh, yes.
We've been labor this situation since January of this year, and if we don't get anything, I mean, I don't want to sound, if we don't get anything done now, it'll be next year, whenever spring hits and spring break hits, and then if it doesn't happen now, we got to wait for the spring, and we don't make the building in time for the Fourth of July, which obviously is a big fundraiser for the park, then we'll estimate spending at least five thousand dollars for a tent and temporary lighting, which is like throwing money out the door.
Who's supplying the anchor plates?
Lowe's. That would be that Obowski, what was his company?
If you're, if you're comparing the two, Chuck's indicates anchor apron, anchor aprons to building as per plan, and this is anchor plates, are they not given any anchor plates?
The building portion of the package provides anchor plates.
And you said there's no excavation needed? What's going on with the existing slab?
It's gone. Thanks to your joint venture with your township.
Do you have questions when they start your.
We've already asked that question. One said two to three weeks, the other one said immediately, so, and it could be yesterday starting, I was concerned.
And that will give us the opportunity to put those beams up for that, put the posts up for that building, get the frame up, I hear the sunflower, is what they're hoping to do.
Just to make a comment, the waiving of the bids, which is what the question is before you right now, primarily what had happened was, was that in the very beginning, they started talking about the design of the building, which we had to jump through, and go talk to a lot of people, which took longer than we thought. Then, when the concrete came in, no one had a clue what that concrete was going to come in at, so when the first came in, price came in, I think everybody choked. So what they decided to do was get a second price, and I'll remind you, the clock is ticking. So the second price came in, and says, okay, we thought you were going to be ready to go, there was a redesign in the building, but it didn't change actually the concrete, which then stalled us a little bit more, and then bottom line is, just then came, the question came as far as bids, and I think, just to rest everybody assured, normally, if we had thought about this maybe a little bit differently, maybe we could have gone out for bids in the very beginning, but because of all that's transpired over these months, I don't think we would have ever gotten there this year. So, and once again, we emphasize, just like the other items, is that we did get two prices, and then we did get a third, and we did ask for a fourth, so at least we were shopping, just as they were trying to be fiscally responsible.
Do the, do the plans provide what type of gravel they're supposed to use?
Yes.
So, Carter's saying they're doing everything for those drawings, and you guys are in full acceptance of that?
Yes.
Are we planning on putting any electrical inside this enclosure before the concrete gets thrown down?
Yes. Again, that's the general excluding this, this volunteer.
Who's coordinating the work between the general and the construction company? Because that conduit's got to be in before they even think about putting forms down.
Oh, yeah. He's asking.
The conduit, any, any, any kind of conduit that you need in the ground to support any electrical in that building, needs to be put in before they get those forms in place. Because if you do it afterwards, you could delay the forming of concrete, and you're also, you could delay them getting the concrete on there on site and getting the forms in place.
Actually, if you see the prints, that's already taken into consideration, because where the electrical panel is, and electrical's coming in, is in the far, what would that be, southeast corner, southwest corner, it's on the prints, so it's only like four feet in from the outside of the building. But he's asking who would coordinate that, it's going to be.
Someone has to coordinate that effort, because if the guy who's doing this on a voluntary basis gets busy on his real job, that could totally knock this thing even further back. So someone, whoever's doing it, has to coordinate. Anybody working inside that scoped area has to be coordinated.
There's five of us on a building commission, which would, I think, would be your answer, that would be the coordination. That would be the coordination for, if I'm reading you right.
It's better if you have one person who generals the entire site. Ruling by committee is instantly going to fail a project, especially when you're doing construction. So when a decision's made by the 4th of July commission, that committee has made a decision to go forward. You need one person on site who coordinates any excavation, any, so that if anything goes wrong, he knows who's responsible. Right now, you can't do this by committee. You've got to have one point person who decides that this guy's got to get it done. And if he can't get it done, you've got to find a way of getting those conduits in the ground to support pouring of the concrete. Otherwise, doing this right now is a waste of time. That's what worries me. You need to get this organized if you're going to do this and accelerate this through.
And I believe that would be Kenny Bobowski. He's, that's like he's coordinated all the electric that we've been working on. He's basically been the front man and all that. So he would be, he is the general, he is the one that would basically rule. We sure as hell don't know what we're doing.
There's a water line, there's some conduit and a stormer, I remember it, underneath the slab.
Who's doing the water?
The gentleman, Kenny. Or Bobby?
They only got a quarter inch service or a three-quarter that's already there and stubbed and.
It's just a wash down floor.
I'm not worried what it's for or why we're doing it, I'm worried that you get all this coordinated so you don't have a concrete truck waiting for a guy to get done.
I don't think I have really anything that can probably use pre-existing, Brian.
Okay, hold up a minute. I think these questions we better ask when the motion is to approve the bid, where all is before us right now.
We've already made the motion.
Only to waive bids, correct? The question was only to waive bids.
Okay.
And that, the questions were good, so I was going to go, but the question before us wanted to waive the bid. So there's been a motion and there is a second. Anybody have any questions to the waiving of bids motion? Roll call.
Clary?
Yes.
Aaron? Yes. Meyer? Yes. Capros? Yes. Coleman? Whalen? Yes.
No, no, you haven't approved it.
You got to approve it now.
Approve the concrete now. Just wait bid, that's all.
Okay, so the proposal is this amount?
Yes.
Okay. I'd like to make a motion to accept the proposal from Carter Concrete Construction, Inc. In the amount of thirty thousand six hundred and seventy-five dollars.
Second.
Second.
Motion in form or was it second? Any questions to this motion? And just to emphasize, Brian, I think your point's very well taken, it'll be Aaron. Roll call.
Whalen?
Yes.
Coleman? Yes.
Capros?
Yes.
Meyer? Yes. Aaron? Yes.
Are you going to do business coming for the board? If matters, our motion to adjourn.
So.
Second, motion, second, roll call.
Clary?
Yes.
Aaron? Yes. Meyer? Yes.
Yes.
Yes.